I'd like to call this meeting in the Festus City Council to order roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes, here.
We do have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total three hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and sixteen cents.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Motion passes. Remarks of visitors.
We receive none, sir.
We have none. I have two proclamations to give out this evening. The first one is to Maya Hairston, and if she would step forward. The city of Festus would like to pause and recognize Maya Hairston as the twenty twenty-four state champion in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four JCAA wrestler of the year. And whereas Maya began wrestling at the age of twelve in the Hillsborough Youth Wrestling Program, and her accolades include J ninety-eight Dream Team Wrestler of the Year twenty twenty-four, Folk Style National Champion twenty twenty-three, fourth place state finisher, finisher, twenty twenty-two sixth place state finisher, two-time district champion, two-time top five finishes at the Wonder Woman Tournament, and a recent thirty-three and two season record. And Maya's academic achievements include twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic all-state and scholar athlete. Whereas her future plans include pursuing a degree in the medical field, Maya also enjoys enjoys drawing and design in her downtime. Coach Shepherd describes Maya as a very kind, energetic, funny, driven, and intelligent young lady who deserves all the success that has come her way. Maya's biggest cheerleaders are her dad, Mark, mom, Kim, older brother Cody, and little sister Kenzie. And whereas the city of Festus is pleased to recognize Maya Hairston for her extraordinary talent, perseverance, and hard work, including proudly representing the Festus School District and the city of Festus, and now therefore I, Samuel F. Richards, mayor of the city of Festus, Missouri, along with the city council, do hereby proclaim April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as Maya Hairston Day. In witness thereof, I have hereunto sent my hand and affirmed the seal of city of Festus, Missouri, this twenty-second day of April in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four. Signed, Samuel F. Richards, Mayor. I'd like to have Coach Shepherd come back out. City of Festus would like to pause and recognize Jared Shepherd as the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four JCAA Girls Conference Coach of the Year. And whereas beginning in twenty-twelve for boys and twenty-eighteen for girls, Festus Wrestling has acquired ten individual district champions, eight state medalists, eighteen state qualifiers, two state finalists, and two state champions. And whereas the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four girls' season had two second-place finishes, one third-place finish, six, one, and one dual record, ninth place in the state team finish, and the St. Louis Officials Association Class One Team of the Year. And Coach Shepherd has coached six seasons, three of them as the Festus head boys and girls' coach. And additional accolades for Coach Shepherd include twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three JCAA Girls Conference Coach of the Year and the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three J ninety-eight Dream Team Girls Coach of the Year. And whereas the city of Festus is pleased to recognize Coach Jared Shepherd for his hard work and dedication to the boys and girls' wrestling programs at the Festus School District, and now therefore I, Samuel F. Richards, mayor of the city of Festus, Missouri, along with the city council, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four as Coach Jared Shepherd Day. Coach, congratulations. Okay, moving right along. We have bids. For the water department, we have a vector truck hose replacement. But I have a staff report, please.
So, uh, as you guys probably know, we have a vector truck, back truck. It is incredibly efficient for doing digging. Uh, currently, the hose is damaged, so on the boom that carries the hose, we are able to pivot with it, but it cannot extend because of damage to it. Uh, that damage typically comes with, uh, whenever it sucks up some of the larger rocks, it can cause damage whenever it comes up and hits it at the, I think, at the articulation or the turn in it. And so we've been working with it, not being able to extend for a little while, and so this was the bid that we got for a replacement hose.
And we have a bid from COE Equipment at the sum of five thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
I guess none of that, uh, we can turn in on insurance? That's just wear and tear? Okay.
Greg or Mike, um, I missed a part. Is it come on maintenance? Is that where it's coming out of?
Water distribution.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid from COE Equipment in the sum of five thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-four cents to replace the vector truck hose.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next bid we have is from the Public Works Department. Well-ten pump inspection and replacement. Staff report, please.
So the well-ten pump is in need of inspection and refurbishment. It has been running for twenty years without anything being done to it. Uh, this is the only pump that runs the well-ten, and it has lost about fifteen percent efficiency over the past twenty years. Uh, like we mentioned before, this is a list of costs for things that may come up. It's about a thousand feet below us, though, at the moment, so we can't quite tell what entirely is happening to it. And so when they pull it up, they'll go over the whole thing with a fine-tooth comb and go through the items that will need to be done to this pump. Uh, it was just functioning, though. Um, whenever I first started, I believe we had to run it after the water main was hit. And so we're confident that the two-hundred horsepower motor isn't going to be necessary, but there are other items in here that we think will come up.
Is there any discussion?
So, that's twenty years old this pump is?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's more likely that it's gonna be. If you're gonna pull it up.
We'll find out.
But I mean, is it better to replace it and then constantly?
That's what the inspection's for.
Well, I know how close of it would you be determined to like? If you only got life of another year or two, would you still run it or would you?
Pumps get rebuilt all the time. Uh, it's a fairly common process for water systems, so I think, uh, approving an amount not to exceed seventy thousand. Uh, and again, if we find out we get in there and it's grenadeed on us, then okay. Uh, we'll come back to council and ask for, uh, what we would need to replace the pump. We'd, we'd have to get prices at that time.
Any life expectancy on them, out of curiosity? Do they give life on those things? Like, how long do they expect the pumps to?
You know, uh, if you think about, um, a municipal water system, uh, let alone, uh, someone, uh, that, uh, lives on a, on a, uh, private well, uh, those things will sit in the ground for twenty-five, thirty years and just, they run. Um, so, uh, this has been a, uh, a, a good, good pump for us. Um, it's our high-yield well. Uh, so it's the one that produces the most amount of water, uh, between it to, uh, well eight. Uh, so I think it's, it's worth, it, it certainly needs to be rebuilt, uh, but we need to get it pulled and investigated first.
Greg is the same company in, in existence. Okay, so it's easy to get parts for it.
We're currently running refurbished pumps up at the scenic tank as well as the pounds road tank, I believe, as well.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid from Brock Tech Well and Pump as not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yep.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes. Motion passes. We also have a bid tonight for the Edgewater Phase One Main Replacement. Staff report, please.
Uh, we have six bidders total, four of which were under the engineer's estimate. Uh, it came in at a very agreeable price for us on this at about one point three million. And that is to do Phase One in total. This particular work will get started at, now I'm trying to orient myself to the map. I believe that is the south, like, corner coming into it. Yeah, it starts at, uh, where Edgewood intersects Mid Meadow, and we'll go all the way down, uh, to, uh, Orchard, and also take in the dead end on Rosemary. Right. About fifty-two hundred linear feet. Wednesday, I've got GIS coming into it. I'm very close. I have GIS. Uh, Mike?
Is there, is there any other discussion?
I would just mention, uh, if you see there, under budget considerations, uh, there is a, uh, reserve of about eleven point eight million uh, in the water and former sewer fund, uh, so we would be, uh, proposing to amend the budget, uh, for this phase and phase two.
Hey Greg, what do we budget for, uh, overages or adjustments? Are we doing a ten percent fund, Mike? On this? Ten percent cost that we're going for on?
That's in the contract, if you look at it. I think we had specific breakdowns for each item. Correct.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I worked around, uh, construction engineers when I was up to county, and they do excellent work. They're really a good company. So we shouldn't have no issues with them.
There's a hundred thousand in there on allowances. Um, and then they also have a rock excavation allowance as well, which would add another hundred and twenty.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the low bid of one million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars from CE Contracting for the Edgewood Phase One Water Main Replacement.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinances and resolutions. This evening, we have Bill forty-seven seventy on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven seventy, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into and execute an e-payment service agreement with Invoice Cloud, incorporating said agreement as a part of this ordinance, prescribing the conditions here, thereto, and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven seventy is now open for discussion. Staff report, please.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Um, this is an agreement for a electronic payment, third-party credit card payee for our BSNA software. Currently, we use Point and Pay. We've used them since two thousand and thirteen. Um, this is another service provider that we can use. Um, we have met with Invoice Cloud, uh, Michael, Christopher, um, our utility clerk, Christie, and Leah, and I believe Aaron Laker was there, and we were all very interested in possibly moving to this other third-party payer. There's really no charge for the city. Um, it's, it's still passed on to the consumer. There is a little bit of a fee break. Um, two point nine five percent versus the three percent. Uh, the only thing that the city could get charged for is they are big on trying to, um, get customers to go paperless, which would be a benefit for the city because then we would reduce our postage, um, the paper, the sorting machine, the manpower. Um, so that would be twenty cents per page per month if anybody went paperless.
Um, Michelle, so, I don't know, it's been a month or so ago, and I was kind of just throwing out the idea of maybe something along this line. And when reading through this, and there's a lot of pages there, but one of the things that it seems like that we will be saving are man-hours where people can, um, rather than be opening envelopes up with checks in them or however else they may be paying, they could be answering service calls or doing something perhaps more productive to the citizens. So it looks like you have an approximate, like, forty-seven thousand dollar charge per year that would cost the city. But I think I might argue and, um, and there are points in here where, um, shutdowns of, of water are less under this program. Um, there's more, there's more time for people, uh, that are now servicing these manual requests to, uh, to do other things that are more productive to the city. And, you know, when you look at places like, um, you know, like Ameren, for instance, or, uh, Spire, uh, Verizon, AT&amp;T, when you go to the grocery store, when you go to Walmart, wherever you may go, those prices, you don't, you know, you're not going to pay an extra two point nine five or three percent. Those are already absorbed into the cost, so I, I personally feel that it would be a good thing to become a little more digitally ready, a little more, um, um, a little more, if you want to call it, up to date, and, um, I don't know if up to date is a fair assessment or not, but.
So what you're saying is instead of passing the two point nine five percent on to the consumer, that the city take that portion?
I would agree with that, yeah. And, you know, it's forty-seven thousand dollars as it is right now, but I don't think it would be that cost after, after everything would be said and done.
I have spoke with Point and Pay, um, and Invoice Cloud, and most municipalities do pass that on to the consumer. Not everybody, um, pays by credit card. We do offer ACH, which is free to the customers. Um, they could pay by check, they can pay by cash. So it, it really comes down to the city council on whether or not you want to, uh, absorb those fees.
No, I completely understand your point of view, and I think if I were sitting in your chair, I would probably be doing the same thing, but, um, and maybe any, maybe, nobody else agrees with my assessment, but that's, that's just my line of thinking where I'm coming from. So I appreciate your work, though. Thank you.
Michelle, can you clarify? We don't charge for ACH now? But they will under this plan.
If they sign up through them, we can still offer it free.
Okay. So how do we get that knowledge out to people? Because they're gonna have to know that, otherwise they're gonna charge a dollar fifty.
We'll have that on our website. I mean, it's available on our website. We've actually got quite a few residents that do do the ACH.
Question, Michelle, and I apologize. The question I had for you earlier that I forgot popped in my head, so I told you it would. So I'm under the impression this is cloud-based, correct?
Correct.
Okay, security concerns me. So Greg, reassure me, cloud is like constantly under attack. So what, I, I'm not asking for great detail. I know they're not here, but A, what prevents somebody from locking the system out? We gotta pay a hacker. B, what prevents somebody from, what can they get if it's hacked? Are we talking about like, Mike Cook's personal information's in this cloud base? Ms. Evans? You know, Jim's? What's, what's in this cloud base for me, please?
Well, they're gonna set up an account with Invoice Cloud, not with the city of Festus. So, and, and the, the upside to, uh, a cloud-based storage system as opposed to a singular site storage system is the data is kept across multiple secure servers at various points across the United States. So that by itself, because you have to hit all of them, uh, it helps keep the data more secure. And they're double encrypted too. So, I mean, it's, they're lots and lots of, lots and lots of security. Um, the, the level of security that these cloud-based systems, so if you recall here in the last year, we, we've transitioned from a server-based, uh, account management system, uh, with BSNA to a cloud-based one. At the end of the day, it is a safer place to keep the data as opposed to a box downstairs in the basement here at City Hall, our own personal server. Um, now we do have data on our server, um, that is still potentially, I mean, someone could hack in, but, I mean, we've taken the amount of steps we've taken in the last three to five years to protect the data of our residents uh, is unprecedented. Um, so, uh, but a cloud-based system is more secure um, because it's, it's not just in one central location. Yeah, yeah. They, they can be hacked, sure, just like anything else. It's gonna take a lot of work to do it because of the level of encryption. Uh, but the fact that all of the data is not all in one place, uh, makes it more secure.
No, that's all right.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any council member that would wish this bill to be carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-seven seventy for the second time and title only? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven seventy for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven seventy, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to enter into and execute an e-payment service agreement with Invoice Cloud, incorporating said agreement as a part of this ordinance, prescribing the conditions thereto, and establishing an effective date. Boyer.
Yes.
Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
No.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to one. Bill forty-seven seventy has passed. We have Bill forty-seven seventy-one on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven seventy-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute contracts and documents for Edgewood Water Main Replacement Project Phase One, incorporating said contract and documents as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven seventy-one is now open for discussion. Can I have a staff report?
Think we've pretty well covered it, but, um, happy to answer any additional questions.
Yes. I was gonna suggest, since the ordinance is drafted such that it's, section one says the mayor is hereby authorized to execute contracts and documents for the Edgewood Water Main Replacement Project Phase One, doesn't identify with whom we are contracting with, and now that we've forwarded to a bid, I would make a suggestion that we amend that section to read that, uh, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with, uh, CE Contracting in an amount not to exceed one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven, one million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty- In an amount not to exceed one thousand two hundred ninety-seven thou- one million two hundred ninety-seven thousand one hundred sixty-seven. And an amendment to the professional services agreement with Burns and McDonald for project management services, an amount not to exceed three hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred. Uh, just so it's clear with whom the contract, which contracts are being authorized from the ordinance.
I caught it.
Motion's been made in.
I was hoping he would.
And second it and just agree whatever he said will be fine.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Now we amend that.
I I'll fix it.
You'll fix it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, try to read that all over again. I'll shoot it over to you. But I honestly was hoping that you would. That's okay.
I would like to uh have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-seven seventy-one for the second time in title only.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven seventy-one for the second time?
Does she need to read it as amended?
No, I mean, you're just gonna do the title, so I think the amendment's gonna be in the body.
Okay.
Thank you.
I like to see that.
But I got really big.
I put that in the words.
Bill number forty-seven seventy-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri. Authorizing the mayor to execute contracts and documents for Edgewood Water Main Replacement Project Phase One. Incorporating said contract and documents as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook. Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven seventy-one has passed. We have Bill forty-seven seventy-two on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill?
Bill number forty-seven seventy-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri. Authorizing the mayor to execute contracts and documents for Festus Jefferson County Water Authority SCADA System Upgrade Project. Incorporating said contracts and documents as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven seventy-two is now open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, would you like that amended to have Process Control Solutions?
Yes.
The name of the company?
Yes, and I'll add that we should include a not to exceed um three hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty-four.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to have the uh bill amended to what he said.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk. Would you please read Bill forty-seven seventy-two for the second time?
Would anybody like an explanation? But otherwise, it, this is. We've had a a grant for ninety-eight thousand from the county, some uh some ARPA funding that was available. Initially, we were looking at. An upgrade to our sewer and water system telemetry. Um, obviously, we don't need the one, uh, but we are still proposing to do the other. This is a joint project with JCWA, Durkin Controls, or now Process Control Solutions. Uh, they are the ones that uh handle all the uh telemetry work at JCWA. Uh, thus the reason why they are the ones that uh provided the proposal here.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any councilman that would like this bill carried over to the next session? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-seven seventy-two for the second time in title only. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Ma- madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven seventy-two for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven seventy-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri. Authorizing the mayor to execute contracts and documents for Festus Jefferson County Water Authority SCADA System Upgrade Project. Incorporating said contracts and documents as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Boyer. Sorry, Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven seventy-two has passed. New Business Finance Department ordered approved.
Good evening. Um, you guys were sent the financial statements um about what week ago, week ago, two weeks ago? Um, if anybody has any questions regarding that, otherwise we're good to just go ahead and approve it.
We just need a motion to accept.
I will entertain a motion to accept the uh audit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. The audit is approved. Under New Business and Public Works Department, the sale of a trailer.
And what a trailer it is.
Yeah. Mike, why don't you just stay up?
I know, I've been up here a bit. And so we've got a trailer from nineteen seventy-five homemade. It carried the roller back whenever we had one with the Public Works Department. It's a little rough, but uh they are asking for it to have a in-house auction for it. As you can see there, it it's been sitting out in the lot for quite some time with no use for it, so we're hoping to get it out of the way.
In-house auction?
Yeah, question, can you explain in-house to me, please?
Yeah.
It doesn't have a title. So we can dispose of it uh internally, selling it to the public would not be without a title. No, because it's not, it's not a titled. And we really can't speak to the uh safety of the trailer as well. We can post it. That's fine.
No, well, I mean, it's just me, I'm just one person, but like, I I just think of the black eye.
I I feel like it's gonna be an unnecessary black eye.
Post it on the website as well.
Can we scrap it?
Uh, it it has some serviceability to it. Somebody was wanting to have it out on a farm or something.
It doesn't hold us out for any sort of liability?
You doing AS news?
You can't wait, you can't waive. Liability necessarily for that.
Is that exactly clear what our, what the cause of action would be, I guess? Uh, I mean, I do think that. If it's something that state law requires you to title and we aren't able to offer that, I think we need to be explicit about that for whether it's sold internally or.
Do there have to be any minimum safety uh guidelines for selling something like that?
That as is. As is.
How much is the metalwork versus what it's costing, what we're gonna get out of it?
That's probably, what, a hundred and twenty bucks sitting there, maybe?
What do you think you're gonna sell it for?
Hundred and twenty bucks. Probably a hundred and twenty bucks. We just need it gone, so.
The thing of it is, though, if somebody buys it, they can apply for a homemade title.
They could. They go to highway patrol and try to get one.
I I don't see any problem selling it as is.
And we'll, we'll post it on the website as well.
I mean, couldn't we even uh uh put it on there uh as scrap, sold as is, as as salvage or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. No, I got too much of that scrap metal.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, chief. Back when I, we were looking at selling some stuff, there are some of the local, even like Purple Wave and that, they do sell trailers on there quite often with no title. So.
As is.
As is, no title available. And the buyer knows that ahead of time, so there's nothing that they're expecting them to have that option. They have to look into it on their own later.
As is, no title.
I believe there's an auction coming up. Another one.
Oh, yeah, I think we're trying to get rid of this sooner.
Is there any other discussion? Not all entertain a motion to approve the sale of a nineteen seventy-five homemade trailer as is. Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Go ahead and take care of that. Our next uh new business. Is the new position of right-ofway manager.
So we had touched on this before. Uh, we have a slew of contractors and entities that are gonna be working in the right-ofway. And that amount is only gonna increase over the years as we grow. The corridors that the utilities are in will eventually get more and more utilities in them. And having someone who can be the safeguard for our utilities, as well as being the steward for the other utilities within our right-ofway. Uh, I feel is going to be a very important addition for the city. And I think we had also talked about before as far as hitting utilities, uh, it is becoming very common nowadays that. Utilities used to be remove and replace. Uh, now they are abandoned in place. So it is becoming harder to work in the right-ofway without hitting something. Uh, there's. Old AT&T lines that are abandoned in place next to new AT&T lines. Right now, we're gonna have new water lines next to old water lines. And I mean, it's very difficult to navigate underground nowadays without having all of it dug up, just so you can see exactly where you're going. Uh, this position would also function as an inspector for. Uh, our own in-house projects such as the Edgewood Project. I would expect that whoever has this position would be able to. At least be able to do some sort of inspection for portions of those projects. They would also need to get the STP certification. If they were doing the STP projects, which it's quite simple, but that's another one that I would like to have them on. Uh, a big part of that job is really keeping track of quantities and then keeping track of the work site and maintaining the work zone as far as the traffic control. Which that was one of the big reasons I put the traffic control certification in there is because. That sometimes falls by the wayside as important, and it is very important to citizens knowing how to detour the. Uh, sites that are maybe blocking one of the roads that they've taken for twenty years and they need a good way around it. We're asking for ten years of experience with this position because I feel that. Someone who is familiar with the area, uh, that will help, but someone who has truly proven themselves with utilities as a whole. And has knowledge of them, uh, will be someone that needs years of experience as far as seeing the different problems and items that rise from. Water, telecom, streets, stormwater, all of them kind of have their own issues that arise and hopefully we can kind of capture that knowledge in whatever individual we find with this.
Hey, Michael, thanks for bringing, bringing me up to speed up. I'm still having trouble getting that document all the way down. Uh, what about pay and pay grade and all that?
It's uh listed on the first page of the uh job description, uh, so it would be pay grade twenty-eight.
Okay, I'm I'm unable to pull it up on my i products, so sorry.
Take twenty-eight.
Okay.
Question for you. So when a utility contractor comes in and submits plans to Mark for his review. Will we require another set then for our right-ofway manager to also review and give comments back even on proposed future projects? Has we thought about that yet?
I would want him to be involved on everything in the right-ofway, so I think there will be a. There will be involvement, but I do want to point out that there would be a definite split between what is building and what is right-ofway because. His guys handle everything building. The right-ofway permits will, yeah.
And I guess as a follow-up, so I know when we were doing the, what was it, the Goodwin Development? Uh, those cores and and testing and things like that, that would be something that this person would follow up on. Uh, cause I know you went round and around with making sure the testing and then the. The bond or whatever that needed to be posted because of the, some of the deficiencies. Uh, that was all through you. This would go through this person. Okay, all right. No, I like it.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the new position of right-ofway manager.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. We have a new position. Do we have any old business?
No, sir.
Good, Councilman Boyer.
It's uh looking, looking a lot better. Look like you got a ways to go, but it's come along pretty good. Greg, on these telephone poles down here on the curve, are those scheduled for removal or placed back or anything at all? Oh, they got a new pole down there.
Yeah, some of the new poles, um, unfortunately, some of the poles could not be relocated because. Uh, some of the property owners wouldn't give us a temporary construction easement uh for the move- uh, to be able to move those poles, so. Um, there is some still to be moved and there'll be some on phase two as well. Um, that Ameren actually went. Phase two actually went kind of above and beyond and Ameren went ahead and got some easements where they could relocate some poles, which was very nice of them to do. They normally wouldn't do that, but. Uh, yeah, some of those poles, uh, they're close. Yeah, there's no doubt.
Maybe they can wrap a mattress or. Uh, pickleball court's looking pretty good. They got the concrete all done and the fencing has still to go up. Now, how many, how many courts, you remember how many courts we had before?
Oh, we had six before, eight, yeah.
Eight now? That would be pretty nice. It seems like pickleball is really booming right now. Lot of areas. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Weiner.
Pickleball is booming, Mr. Boyer, Councilman Boyer. Um, very happy to see the Edgewood Project uh come to fruition. And uh what may seem like a long time for the residents there, but a really short time as far as city government goes, so. Um, looking forward to the streets being uh back in order, you know, it's it's a little painful right now, but that's the price of improvement and uh things will. It's gonna be really nice when things are done. So that's all I have, sir.
All righty, Councilman Dennis.
Uh, I'm sure everybody's wondering what that large bullet hole size blew down my forehead. That is a spider bite. Had to be laid up for two weeks. Uh, sick as a dog. So my apologies if I ain't been around much. That's what I've been dealing with.
Uh, believe it or not, it looks a lot better. So with that said, I'm glad to see the Edgewood project moving forward. Uh, I know that's caused a lot of folks, a lot of uh, hard feelings over there and, and just hard to day-to-day operations. Uh, welcome, Michael. I haven't got to meet you yet, but it sounded like you're doing a bang up job where I had one question, Michelle. Um, when we sell these things on the purple wave, shouldn't they go into general fund? I know different apartments, uh, uh, lay claim to them specifically Doug, but, uh, just saying, uh, how do we do the paperwork on that?
I can, I can clarify that wherever the asset was purchased will go back to that department. So any police vehicles that goes to the police department, any street dump trucks, trucks that goes to the street department.
Does Doug get that trailer money too?
Well, and now I'm not sure who owns the trailer if it's the street or the water, but it'll go to one of those.
Well, I'm sure whatever we get for.
I sell it, I'm taking it.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Cook.
Thank you. Um, Greg, um, been working with, um, a resident on a dog by, or a dog complaint with multiple dogs. Um, so Mike, I sent you the email. She has a camera up. She is showing multiple dogs. So what would be the next step? So, um, I, I know. And that way I can at least pass on to her and, uh, let her know who to contact next.
So the next thing I will do is send it to, uh, Jason Allen, who is the, uh, patrol officer. And he will likely go out there and make contact with the resident. Uh, but I, I pass along all information to him first so that he knows what's going on and he will go there physically to check on the site and make sure it's on the phone or something like that. But, uh, that would be the next step.
Okay. And then Brian, um, poor, poor Mark, I, I totally forgot about it and I'm sure he's tired of hearing about it, but I'm stuck and Greg, I need your help too. We, we have a, a property owner that's got a dirt track in the city limits. I went by and looked at it today and it's pretty excessive and now it's subjective, but I do believe there's gotta be something that I don't know how you can just create a dirt track in your backyard and ride motorcycles. Like, well, and I'm all for private property, but I kind of think they have a complaint. I think they got a valid complaint here because I've had four neighbors contact me and I think Mark's hands are kind of tied and I don't want to bug Mark anymore. Um, and Greg, or you kind of guide me on this, please?
Yeah, it's, I, I haven't seen it yet and obviously there's a lot of facts and circumstances taken into account, but it certainly could be, uh, considered a nuisance that we may be able to abate. Uh, most cities, I believe, including Festus have a kind of a catch-all definition of what using property in a certain way that, um, impacts the public health and welfare of the community or something like that. Uh, and obviously dirt track is not something that's usually called out in an ordinance. Uh, but it's certainly possible depending on exactly what's happening in the property that would violate that. And that's something that we have a process in our code that we can go to, to either, um, seek a, a court order or something like that, that it's, uh, that it'd be abated or that we could cite the owner uh, for violation of the nuisance ordinances or potentially the city zoning ordinances as well. But again, it's, you know, it's kind of a fact-specific situation.
And Greg, is that something we can possibly have a quick review with, with Brian on? That, that way I've been hounding him and he's trying his best.
No, we have pictures of the property. Um, I can, I can send it over to you and then you just let us know how we want to proceed. We'll probably need, I assume at some point, Mike, if you have any communication with those neighbors, they're going to need to sign a complaint.
May not necessarily need to have a complaint form, but I probably would need a statement from them or they may potentially need to testify at a nuisance payment hearing or a court session or something like that.
How about, so I don't muddy the waters, no pun intended, um, Greg, just shoot me an email and I'll pass it along. And if they want to continue to follow up, then that'd be up to them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll relay the information about the property, Brian, and then when I hear back, uh, from him, we'll know how to proceed.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. And thank you. And then, uh, Mike, I heard you're doing a great job. I've talked to you a couple of times. I, I know you personally as well. I worked with you. I, I know you're doing a great job. If you can fit something in your schedule and, and I know it's going to be laughable because you're busy like everybody else. Sunshine really concerns me there in the park and I, I've just talked to Greg about it. I, I just want it on somebody's radar. That is a straight stretch. And we get that splash pad going and we get that park going and cars don't stop. I, I don't think they realize it's a park zone and that pedestrians have the right of way. And I'm still concerned and I'm getting more concerned. I'd like to have some type of discussion in the near future on that and see what we can't accomplish on traffic measures, changing something. Just proof of thoughts, put on your radar, please, you and Greg and maybe get with Chief.
I have gotten started on sunshine. Uh, there was guard rail called out for a small section, but the entire strip, I mean, we've got a portion of trail that comes over the road that then leads to a bridge that then opens up to a whole park, which I've been to at Benson, it gets very busy. And I think, uh, I, I pulled the project for the guard rail and I'm looking into a FHW raised safety grant to see if I can do the entire stretch, uh, with maybe that as seat money to put up against the grant money. If I can work out a way to get some data that would make them want to give us some money for the safety of it.
Would that offer pedestrian safeties? Let cars know, hey, we are in a park zone. Pedestrians have their right of way.
So reading through, uh, some of this middle information, it looked like it would take into consideration crossings, ADA improvements, uh, traffic calming, uh, the whole list of items to the left back safety.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you. Councilman Collier.
Uh, the other council people pretty much covered the things as far as the, uh, work going on and, uh, the proper signage to let people know detours and everything would be great. And the other biggest problem I got is I need somebody to come down here and show me where the fish are at because they're just not cooperating. And that's all I have today, sir.
You got the death finder?
Councilwoman Templeton.
Just a couple of things. One was that I know we have a lot of pain points in the city right now, but we also have a good amount of good things that are happening. So I like that people can kind of offset the infrastructure, which we see now, but we won't see in the future as well as the things they will see. And had a lot of people say that they may not like all of the disruption, but they do like that we're much more transparent about where to expect it. They don't feel like there's so many surprises of, oh, I can't go this way or I can't do that. They kind of have an idea. So the improved communication, I think is definitely a feather in our cap. I'm curious, where are we at on the improved, uh, crosswalk by the firehouse?
So Michael had a chance to look at that. Would you like to address that? Cause we had a, a, another ask come up, uh, this one from Compass and, uh, it, it, I just said, go ahead.
So, uh, the short of it is you look for controlled sections for crossings and a controlled section would be at an intersection because you have signage or a signal that is part of your controlled intersection. And this all comes from MUTCD. It's a big handbook on pedestrian or signage and pedestrian safety. And so typically what it would require is a engineered study and one of the items that comes up is the consolidation of crossings. And if I'm thinking of the right section of North Mill, it's that we have the crossing at main, then we have the crossing at second with then north and south crossings as well as the crossing in front of the fire station. And then another crossing north of there, is that a third street? Or is it stopped at that being the last one?
I don't think you have an answer because you got a no stop.
It's that in about a three hundred and fifty foot stretch, we have four crosses and that right there is actually a danger. And so we could get more into it. It would prompt an engineer study to start taking traffic counts. And they would point out if there's additional items needed for signage, but one of the items that would likely come up is you have too many crossings and you need to take one away.
So, whi- which I, I guess I don't disagree with and I'm no engineer, but I can tell you that the stop or the crosswalk that probably gets the most use is not the one at second. It's the one right in between the firehouse compass and the gymnastics in Olympia.
Oh yeah, I've been stuck there watching kids run across.
And the other issue you have is people coming up the hill on the other side of compass that don't have to stop whipping around that corner and going across. So me as a person who was at that gym three and four days a week for six years with my daughter is, it's dangerous. It's not well illuminated. And even if you moved it, the likelihood of people, and I realize if that's where the crosswalk is, they need to go, but the likelihood of people going down to second street, crossing over and coming back up, not going to happen because it's not a direct, because these are people that are transporting kids back and forth across as well as the firehouses right there. So I realize there's an expense to it, but I think it's, we have to do something just to try to improve that, the illumination of it, the safety of it, all of it. I mean, I know the firehouse sees it all the time, people running across that street and people speeding up as they get to the crosswalk. Um, cause I've experienced that firsthand, just zip right across there. So anything we can do to improve that would be greatly appreciated.
And that's a really good point about, I mean, the classic design flaw is you'll create this meandering path and then you see the dirt path that just goes straight. It's the closest distance between two points.
Correct.
Uh, so it's, I know that that must be the case there. I've sat there before and waited for people crossing, but, uh, yeah, we can definitely still look into that. And it definitely would need some safety features added.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Vans.
Well, on that same note, Mike. Okay. So basically we would be stuck trying to do something ourselves. We wouldn't be able to get funding for it or.
We would need to have a study.
But in reality, you're probably going to come downward because it's not going to fall under their guidelines. We're going to either move it or do what we can to improve it ourselves, basically, wouldn't it?
It's important to, to, to remember. So what he mentioned, the MUTCD, okay, that the uniform traffic code, uh, uniform traffic control devices.
Right.
So if you have improvements in the roadway that are not consistent with a national standard, you, you're potentially creating a hazard. You're creating something that.
All right, yeah, we all.
So, so us doing it ourselves is not a, 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 a good way to approach it. Obviously we'd want, um, we'd want to one, make sure that we're following MUTCD, but also that we would have an engineer that would say here and here are the places that you want to put those crosswalks in. So.
Well, I, I understand that, but if it comes back, like she said, point, the shortest point right there, everybody's going to want you to go here. What do we, it, do we, we, we're, we couldn't do nothing about it except go by what they said in the long run. If it comes down to saying, you got to do it here or here, not where we want to put it at, basically what you're.
Well, it's subjective, Bobby. We really don't know until we do it, right?
Okay. And that, would that be the same for, like Mike said on sunshine, like we know all the improvements that are going to be happening down there with the splash pad and everything else. We're, we're going to try to do crosswalks down there somehow for people or are we going to try to do any kind of safety to keep people on sidewalks, paths, whatever it takes, or people are going to be crossing on the lakeside, coming over to the other side? Are we, you looking at that too?
I can make any part of this city as safe as possible, given enough money. However, that then typically comes with inconveniences. So it's a big part of the engineered study is to find that middle ground.
Right.
And so that's typically what we fall back on is we'll get an engineered study, engineers that specialized in traffic calming, ADA, and they can give us good alternatives or solutions to the problems that we've got in those areas.
Well, I, I mean, I understand that, but the public's going to be honest. Once they see how busy it, it gets, they're going to be sitting there saying, you guys need to do this and do this and safety. And we, we all understand what, what it needs to be done. But they're still going to come back on us wondering what the city's going to do about it. So I'm just trying to prevent something or have a place, a plan in place before it happens, trying to cover how busy or extra busy it's going to get when we start developing that down there. That's what I'm saying. I, so I mean, I, I want to do everything we can to make it as safe as possible. And, uh, so I mean, whatever it takes, expensive, whatever, we need, we want to do what we can to make that, it might, it'll be inconvenient for some people that care less, but overall the safety, we, we want to make sure everybody's safe going from one side to the other.
Right. And it's the, I guess what I'm getting at is we have, there are options out there. We can definitely do things in those sections to make them safer. Uh, we want to make sure that we don't over-correct and then cause a new group of complaints to then start up because of something that we've done to address another issue.
I realize that you're thinking, Mike, Mike, I guess my question is, is there a reason we can't just add a stop sign on either side of the road, right at the main crossing between the two sides of the park? Cause there's a long span between the previous stop sign at bike crates.
Are you on Mill Street or you?
Correct. No, on.
Now you're on sunshine and we want to stop them where?
If you had a four-way stop at the main entrance to the park, then you've got a crosswalk to go across the street.
Something we can look at.
Cause there's a long, long span. Where's the most east? I'd want that to be eastern.
I'm sorry, I know my floor is over, but I'm going to lean toward Mike. If we're going to do something, we'll do an engineer study because stop signs.
I don't disagree with the engineer study, but I also think that we all know what the kids are doing on that road. Same thing they've been doing on that road for a hundred years.
But a stop sign is a false sense of security.
I agree.
And it can also get you in trouble if you don't have the study to back it up instead of just.
I think we definitely need a study, but I think there's some sort of control, something.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, it's exciting, everything we're doing. I mean, I'm thrilled. We're, the city's moving. It's like it is progress, like we're supposed to be. I mean, it's an inconvenience right now with all the construction, but it's going to be great weeks or months or whatever it is. So, uh, but, um, thank you, sir. And then Mark, big praises, bud. You know who I mean? He is on cloud nine. He called me jumping for joy, cleaning, getting that cleaned up and yes, over there and, um, you know, he's just thrilled. The Alexander Heights. So thank you. And, um, I think that's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tenon.
Um, I talked to, uh, uh, trash drop off went really good over the weekend. I got to hang out with those guys and eat lunch. So, you know, uh, but yeah, they had a lot of stuff coming in, but the question I have is my daughter brought this to my attention. One of you guys can help me with this. So we have a country western star coming to the park for a concert, kind of a famous one. Who, who is it? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I heard about that.
Uh, okay. So she asked me, uh, she said, do you guys realize how many people that's going to attract? And, and of course I, I didn't really know what she was talking about, but she's got a good point. So my question is, um, is the city allowed to benefit from some of this? I mean, can we have a nice stage? We have the facility. We are always looking to make more money. Um, what? So why can't we do that?
Charge a gate fee?
A gate fee or anything.
It's always been free.
I, I know it's.
It's covered, I mean, the, the performance, the performer is covered by tourism. Um, and we budget an amount in the parks budget every year, uh, for the production of the festival, including, uh, the fireworks. Um, it, as long as the firecracker festival has been the firecracker festival, it's been a free event for the community and everybody else.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, uh, you know, we just went through a long discussion about a three percent, uh, money on credit cards. Um, why doesn't the city utilize some of our stuff to make money? I mean, it, it's not going on during, I mean, we're doing it for the Fourth of July, but we have, uh, fifty-one other weeks that we could do things.
Well, and we do, I mean, obviously facility rentals, uh, whether they're renting a ball field or a pavilion, uh, they're paying a fee to do that, whether they're renting the band building or wanting to use one of the meeting rooms at the library. That, that costs a, a person to be able to use our facilities. So, um, it's, uh, we are, we're not recouping the total cost of these things because those facilities cost, you know, millions of dollars to construct, but at the end of the day, it's a service. It's something that enhances the quality of life for our residents and those who come to visit us. So, uh, it's, it, it's not intended to be a profit-making venture.
Well, I understand that, Greg, but I'm just saying, uh, if I had the opportunity to go see a concert and it cost me $2 to park my car and I'm looking for. and I'm looking for something to do on a Saturday night, I don't think I'd have a problem paying two bucks. Would you guys? Or do you guys, everybody sees it differently?
We used to do that.
I don't, I don't have a problem paying, paying forty dollars to go see the Cardinals.
Yeah. No, I mean, it, so it used to be back in the day, the, the Boy Scouts would handle the parking and they, they would get, it was a fundraiser for them. So they would charge people to park and they received the money for it. Uh, since I've been here, the city has not charged for parking. One, because the size of the crowd has become such that uh, we now pay a firm to come in and handle the parking for us because they're professionals. They know what they're doing. Um, so uh, you know, the scale of these events have in, you know, increased to the last seven, eight years. Um, the fact that we have someone working full-time on recreation and tourism for us, you know, I think that's a testament to how the city has gone about approaching these types of events and how it makes it better to, to live in Festus because Festus does cool stuff like this. So, yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just stating a fact or a point that, you know, it's uh, we, we do talk about, I remember one time, it's been years ago, where we were talking about, um, we raised a price of trash, uh, one dollar. And I, I don't remember how much uh it made, like it made a lot of money for one dollar. And, and I just don't understand why we can't do other things to attract more people and, and I know Barb's probably thinking, oh my gosh. But, but it's, maybe you think we could hire another person, you know? Um, I, I just think it would be something to look into, in my opinion. Start it out small and see how it goes. Because we also used to have uh the concession stands and we let those go. We, we uh sub those out to other people and then I guess would, is that still going strong or not?
Yeah, uh, so the Firecracker Festival, the um beer and wine tents, that's handled by the Kreitz family. Did I get that right? No, I'm sorry, just the beer, the beer tent. Um, and, and that, um, you know, that's something that, that they've done the last few years. Um, I know during Twin City Days, which is not necessarily a city event, uh, the uh habsegur group comes in and they run the uh, so it, it, it benefits charitable work, uh, because those groups will come in and they'll put in the work and they'll get a piece of the action, so to speak. Uh, and it helps them and, you know, the scholarships and things that they award. Um, it's, you know, we're, we're helping these other civic organizations out as part of uh, a big event that the city is helping sponsor.
You just think it's kind of a, a wash one way or the other because.
Well. It's also a safety hazard, slowing the traffic down. Uh, you want to keep that moving and that's a consideration. When you start collecting a couple bucks here, I mean, I've worked it for years. Doug's worked it all his life too. And when you do that, it, it brings it to a standstill. They've got it now to where it flows and moves. So that's the problem with collecting and stopping people. Finally figured out how to keep it moving with them parking people. I didn't mean to take your time, but I, having some experience with it out there is one of the reasons that I don't think it's a good idea to slow it down. Doug's figured out how to get it moving and keep it moving. Uh, and it's always been a hazard. Uh, you know, there's always consideration for a mass casualty event. And if you can't get in and out, that's a consideration. So that, that would be one thing I would think of, so.
I'm afraid of the image, Jim. I, I, I totally agree. You got a business mind and, and I think we need to use it more. I think this is the wrong event to do it. I just, I do. Um, the tourism comes from people staying in hotels and stuff and at least in my little small head, when people come here for this concert, they're probably gonna stop and get gas, buy soda. They're gonna eat somewhere probably as well.
Yeah.
I, I, I think you're on to something. I think this is the wrong event in my, in my little head.
And Mike, it's kind of difficult to explain because it just, you know, it just came up today, but, but it's kind of, it's kind of like the, the eclipse, you know, it's like uh um, my daughter, another daughter of mine said, Ted, you don't even need to go anywhere today. You're not being, you're not gonna be able to get around town. And I said, you know, I've been here my whole life and I'll figure it out. There wasn't a way to get around town. And, and so it's like um, figure out how to keep those people here, keep, uh, make, make sales tax money everywhere in the whole town. And I mean, uh, I saw on the news where they weren't even prepared for that type of numbers of people that we had. And, and I know we definitely weren't, but I'm just saying, you know, there's, there's way to utilize that and make some money for the city and um, people are used to paying money to do any and everything. So it's like, again, if you can go to a concert for two bucks versus twenty bucks, uh, it's just a thought, guys. So maybe we could uh put it on a work session and talk about it sometime.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Alright. Thank you, sir. We have a free shred day coming up, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at the Public Works Building from nine to twelve, from nine AM to twelve PM. Roof of city residence is required. So, you know, you can come and shred documents.
Sam, can I add on something real quick?
Sure.
So when I, when I was at the trash dump over the weekend, how, how do they know where these people come from? I mean.
Check ID.
They asked me.
They never did. They just, they never checked. They just said, are you in fact, yeah.
They asked me what my address was.
Because you look like a criminal. I don't think I saw that. I stood up there for a while watching it because uh, it was pretty impressive, the stuff that people were dumping off and then other people were taking. So.
Put it on that trailer.
Wish, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of activity there, but anyhow, thanks, Sam.
Okay. Is there anything else? I don't have anything else at this time, so therefore I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. And all those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.